She invited.
Yeah. Give us some more time.
Morning, everyone. It's nine a.m. I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you for being here today. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Are you giving the invocation, please? Thank you.
Let's pray. Definitely, Father, thank you for today, Lord. Thank you for the people in this room that serve in the various capacities that they serve, both on one side of the table or the other, whether they're sitting in seats or they're protecting our community here out in the streets, Lord. Thank you for the opportunity to clothe ourselves with humility towards one another and towards you, Lord, where you give grace to those who are humble. And so as we serve today and as we communicate today, that we would communicate in love and in humility in the same fashion as we celebrate the birth of your son, Jesus Christ, who humbled himself in the form of a man, in the form of a baby, to stand in the gap for us, Lord. So I thank you for this opportunity to reflect that. Lord, send your sons. Amen. We pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I should start recognizing these people who come and give the invocation. That's a service to the community. That was Austin Loza with Fellowship of Christian Athletes. So I'm going to try to remember every time. Shelley helped me remember to recognize these people on the on the day. We have one proclamation. Whereas the joint resolution to annex the Republic of Texas was adopted by the United States Senate and House of Representatives on February twenty seven and twenty eight, eighteen forty five, and signed by President Tyler on one March. And whereas the Congress of the Republic of Texas, meeting in special session, voted on June sixteen, eighteen forty five, to accept the annexation resolution offered by the U.S. Congress, and Texas voters approved the annexation ordinance and state constitution on November tenth, eighteen forty five, by a vote of seven thousand six hundred sixty four to four thirty. And whereas the United States Senate and House of Representatives voted to annex Texas by joint resolution, and President Polk signed that joint resolution on twenty nine December, eighteen forty five, officially making Texas the twenty eighth state of the Union. And whereas on March twenty, eighteen forty eight, after the end of the war with Mexico and the ratification of the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo, the Second Texas Legislature adopted a resolution in favor of establishing a line of U.S. Army posts between Red River and the Rio Grande and adopting measures to preserve friendly relations between the Indian tribes and the people of Texas, and requested the state's representatives in the U.S. Congress use their influence for procuring the passage of an act to do so. And whereas on December fifth, eighteen forty eight, Captain Seth Eastman, in command of Company D, First Regiment of U.S. Infantry, arrived at Camp Houston near Friedrichsburg, two miles below the town on the west bank of Barrens Creek, to establish the first Army post on the Texas frontier. And whereas on twenty eighth December, eighteen forty nine, the camp near Fredericksburg was officially renamed Fort Martin Scott. Now, therefore, I, Gerald Hoover, Mayor of the City of Fredericksburg, do hereby proclaim the period December twenty twenty three through December twenty twenty four as the one hundred seventy-fifth anniversary of Fort Martin Scott. In recognition of its role, described by the commanding general of all U.S. Army forces in Texas as, quote, "the most advanced and most important position on the frontier," unquote. In testimony here, I've herein to entered my hand and signed this document. Eric, are you going to receive this on behalf of the good volunteers and people who are working hard on the one seventy-fifth anniversary?
I appreciate it.
All right. Are we going to have a pick? Okay. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Eric Emerson, character of volunteer leading team Carroll for leaving the charge for the one seventy-fifth anniversary celebration that we are going to have across the street on March eighth, twenty twenty four, right around the founding day and a good time to celebrate the great Fort Martin Scott right across the street there. Thank you, Eric. I understand we have some employee recognitions and introductions.
Yes, sir. Mayor, we have five, a couple in finance and several in public works. If we can start with finance and have Krista come up.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, city staff. Happy to introduce you today to two of our newest members in finance, Kim Hui and Tyler Baichi. Kim was hired in August, and she's a city accountant. She resides in City Hall, first floor, right behind utility billing. She actually shares an office with Bridget Flynn. And then Tyler was hired in October, and she is in the center station in utility billing. And just some fun facts, Kim is a recent grandma, like very recently, and Tyler is a U.S. Army veteran. And also, she was introduced to me, and I interviewed her on her wedding day. So would you ladies like to add anything?
Happy to be here.
Very glad to have them on staff. They're wonderful. They've done a great job.
Good afternoon, council. May they greet you and say thank you. Kim, don't you forget this. Good to have you.
Okay, Chris, did you come up?
Morning, Mayor and Council. Have Alec, Jorge, and Caleb come up, please. We had one new employee that wasn't able to join us this morning, so we'll introduce him at the next council meeting. First, Alec. Alec of Vasquez is a new employee in the electric department. He's actually been with the city about six months. Prior to working in the electric department, he worked for Cowboy Communication, and prior to that, he actually worked for the street department here at the city. So we're happy to have him back. Right now, he's basically a lineman helper, learning materials, learning the task at hand, and getting prepared to go into that electric lineman apprentice program that he'll be starting here in the next six months or so. So happy to have him on board. He loves to hunt fish, like a lot of us, play golf, some of his hobbies. Again, we're happy to have Alec on board. Next, Caleb. Caleb is a new employee, started here just under a month ago in our Stormwater Vegetation Management Department. He's from the Houston area, an outstanding baseball player, played for the University of, excuse me, San Houston State University as a pitcher. We're happy to have him here. He's actually engaged to another, to a, his future father-in-law is a, is a city employee in the police department. So we're happy to have him on board. Hobbies, again, hunting, fishing, being outdoors. Glad to have you on board, Caleb. And then last but not least, Jorge Marine with the water department. He's a crew worker, newly hired, been here about two months, two months in the water department, from Fredericksburg, graduated from Fredericksburg High School in two thousand and eleven. I worked at It's Electric and Dairy Queen, still works at Dairy Queen part-time on his days off and so forth. Hobbies, sports, likes to play basketball with friends and family and just be outdoors. Glad to have you on board, Jorge.
Council comments?
Good morning. We had an amazing Christmas parade. I'm sure others will comment on it as well, but I wanted to pass long specifically comments from the Chamber of Commerce Board and from Penny specifically to the Parks Department, Andrea, and to Jennifer Krupa for professionalism and just ease of working with the chamber. And so they just wanted to express their thanks publicly to you. On November twenty eighth, we had a town hall designed Lutheran church, and we had, I think, probably just an amazing group of people, a lot of very diverse conversation. I'm sure our city manager will comment on that, but I thought it was one of the best ones we've had. And then the last comment is, I was really excited with the Pioneer Museum Kinderfest. We had over six hundred people attend this past Saturday. We had three hundred and fifty more adults than we did last year, hundred and fifteen more kids than we had year over year. Stockings were stuffed with toys and goodies, stories, a suspiciously familiar-looking Santa Claus for pictures. And I just want to thank Caitlin Hoover was spearheaded all of that, along with many, many volunteers. So just an amazing community event for us. So thank you all.
My comment, I just want to note that Caitlin Hoover is well-known. Good for her.
I attended Market Square Development Meeting, and we are looking for an open house or ribbon cutting sometime January, late January, April, February. But that's all coming together. They've ordered the plaques to be put on the, on the building, and it's pretty much finished. I think there's a few touch-ups, but it's looking good, and I think they're starting to take reservations for the little room for next year already. Not quite yet, but close. So anyway, that'd be a good big plus for us. Other thing, this is when I visited with Mitt just a while ago. I'm going to get rid of those buses on Main Street that have been sitting there for weeks. The city does need to, the county has told me they wouldn't do anything about it. We've written a letter to Text dot. Of course, that's taken some time, but the city does need to start writing ordinance on that. Mick says we should be able to govern that. So we need to start looking at that, but those buses have been sitting there. They're advertising. We know that. So anyway, working on it. Thank you.
I had the pleasure of attending the Gillespie County Eclipse Task Force for Emily this week. Just a few comments. Text dot will be doing work on the bridge at Stonewall, so that will be cut down to two lanes during the eclipse period, which should be exciting for traffic. We received twenty-one thousand mesh trash bags that will be distributed throughout the county, and they've already scheduled the next four events, the four meetings, and they're setting up the civic-ready mass communication, and that will be available for signup, so you'll be able to know what's going on. But we're four months away from, from the eclipse, so we'll have a lot of visitors during that time. And then just a quick reminder, the Santa Fly-In at the airport is December sixteenth from one to four. Thank you.
I have two things. One, the singing Christmas tree was lovely. I know that was your rainchild. How long ago was that?
Twenty sixteen was the first year.
It's a sweet tradition, and it's a good way to kick off Christmas carols. That was a great time. And then also, the Fredericksburg Citizen University deadline is December thirteenth. Would love for as many people to apply as possible. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for our community. Thanks.
This is a great time of year in Fredericksburg, all these great things happening, and people working so hard to make them very special every year, most volunteers. All right. I want to thank whoever moved the screen more toward the dais. That makes it easier for people of a certain age to see. Item number six is the consent agenda, which is one item that we considered the approval of in November twenty first, meetings in the city, regular city, regular city council meeting.
I move we approve the November twenty first city council meeting minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve is presented. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven A, consider amending articles five point zero zero zero, construction permits and fees, and five point four zero zero, application fees pending A, be scheduled of the municipal code, revising fees for applications related to short-term rental permits. Need a motion to remove this from the table?
I saw move.
Okay.
Motion second to remove from the table, consider today.
You have one refuse.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anna, are you the staff present?
I am. Good morning, Mayor and Council. So this did come before you at the last meeting. It was part of an overall fee ordinance. And so we pulled out the STR component to provide a little bit more background on, on the increase and to pull it out so Mr. Riley could vote on the other items. So just bringing this back to you today, a little bit of background, short-term rental management, as you know, has evolved since two thousand and eighteen and has become an issue requiring a significant amount of staff time from multiple departments. In fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, three new positions, the STR specialist, a new code enforcement officer, and a hotel occupancy tax collection specialist were all created to handle STR rental permitting and management. The newly adopted two thousand and twenty-four STR ordinance will increase staff workload by requiring all permits, that's new, renewing, and transfers, to obtain an inspection. And you'll remember, as part of that discussion, that was one of the items that staff brought up that we supported it, but just recognizing that changing that, all permits would require an inspection, that one change to the ordinance would, would do this, it would increase staff workload. And then, of course, this is the impact of that, is having to increase the fees to cover that time. So at this time, staff estimates the need to set aside three full days for code enforcement to conduct those inspections. Currently, we're just doing one day a week on Wednesdays, so we're proposing that code will be working strictly Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, just doing those inspections, those STR inspections. So the two thousand and twenty-four budget did not anticipate this change to the STR ordinance that would increase the staff workload. As such, an increase in fees is needed to ensure STR fees cover all STR-related staff activity, including time, equipment, software, and other expenses. Since the fee was last adopted, expenses have increased for salaries, insurance, software, and equipment. New mapping software has been utilized to identify STR permits and provide basic information. The software requires monthly maintenance to provide accurate STR permitting status and contact information. Development Services shares this GIS software expense with Public Works, and the STR permit fees are paid at the time of permit application. Permit fees include one inspection. The larger the, the larger this structure, the longer the inspection takes. And given the high fail rate of STR inspections, the reinspection fee is proposed to increase from twenty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars. City staff involved in STR permitting and management includes the STR specialist, the associate planner, building official, fire marshal, director of development services, assistant city manager, city manager, hot collections, accounting assistant, city prosecutor, code enforcement, members of the police department, and legal team. Looking at some other cities for comparison, Austin charges eight hundred and thirty-six dollars for an STR permit. San Antonio, that does not conduct an inspection, only charges a hundred dollars and only has one code enforcement officer dedicated to it. New Braunfels, STR permits start at seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. Kerrville charges a hundred dollars, and Galveston, two hundred and fifty. A recent check from Airbnb Average Daily Rate shows that a one-bedroom, that one-bedroom STR averages a hundred and ninety-seven dollars a night, a two-bedroom, four hundred and sixty, and a five-bedroom at just shy of two thousand dollars a night. So the other thing to note will be that non-conforming short-term rentals will also need to register with Development Services Department as non-conforming use. And this is a one-time, two-hundred-dollar registration fee. And so that registration for that non-conforming use is beyond STRs. It's any type of non-conforming use, and that goes back to that piece of state legislation that was passed this last session dealing with non-conforming uses. So that two-hundred-dollar fee was set at the last meeting, and the other planning and development fees that were created. And so we're working on that application. So that will, again, other non-conforming uses that are out there will also need to register, but the non-conforming STRs will have a one-time, two-hundred-dollar registration fee. So the fees themselves, you can see, are changing, it's almost a doubling, but an efficiency in a one-bedroom would be three hundred dollars, a two-hundred-bedroom, two-bedroom unit would be five hundred dollars, a three-bedroom unit, seven hundred, a four-bedroom, nine hundred, and a five-bedroom would be a thousand-dollar permit fee, an STR permit transfer fee would be three hundred dollars, and an STR reinspection fee would be seventy-five dollars. And staff is recommending approval.
Questions?
You know, I, I spent some time with Anna this week and rented it too, I know, and maybe you all did, but I was trying to justify the number, and I think we, I finally was satisfied that we weren't trying to gouge people, and there is cost involved. Now, I still have a problem, and I'm not sure why we're trying to do an inspection once a year. You know, you're only talking about a few bad apples out there, and then, you know, we're putting a lot of work on, on the inspectors. And I'm just thinking we're creating an expense that's not necessary. If you have some complaints against your, then they should be inspected. But if there's no complaints, I'm not sure why we're making go through a one-year inspection. It's just my observation. But I, I kind of can go with the numbers that Anna and Nick come up with.
I have no issues. That was good to me.
I'm fine with the fees the way they're set right now. Yes, for the ordinance. Yes, sir.
Anna, how were these fees derived, other than checking the competence?
Just kind of basing it on the number, assuming an average of a thousand permits, about how much time Jan herself, as the main point person, spends on a normal, easy, and then adding the inspection time for a normal, easy one, kind of basing it and backing out that way, just to ensure we're covering all of our bases.
Do you have an estimate of what the amount of revenue this would bring into the current circumstances?
If we average about five hundred a permit, and an average of a thousand, guessing a thousand permits, it could be upwards of half a million dollars. it could be upwards of half a million dollars. But it's totally dependent on how many new ones and how many renewals we get, and how many transfers. So since Jan has sent out the STR newsletter, we've had several renewals come in. So people are paying attention. They know it's really important to renew, because if they fail to renew and let their permit expire, that they lose, especially if they're non-conforming, they wouldn't be able to get it back. So the folks are paying attention. She's had several withdrawal. So, you know, I think we've had about 15 withdrawal. Still seeing pretty significant number of transfers. So it's totally dependent on, it's totally user-driven. If the market dries up and STR permits fall off, then we might have to find something else for Jan to do. But she's super talented. We're very glad to have her here. And, you know, this would also give enough cushion in the budget for hopefully some raises for those people that have been dedicated to this as well.
I think that part of that, Mayor, is that we don't know when we have. And maybe after a year, we know what kind of costs is involved. We're not, not in a sense, making half a million dollars. We're trying to break even, what we're trying to do.
We are, yes, we're trying to cover our costs, yes. And legal fees and all, you know, all administrative that have touched it. It would be very hard to say exactly how much we spent this year and then going forward next year, not knowing. But anytime if someone appeals and has to go through Jan, through the associate planner myself, and ultimately through the city manager. So that's a lot of staff that's touching one permit.
And we have not covered our costs the last few years.
I doubt it. And this is not making up for that. This is just what we're projecting going forward, so.
All right. Y'all ready to consider this approval?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2023-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve this as presented. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 7B, consider approval of ordinance 2023-22 zoning for traffic and rate of speed on FM 2093 at the city limits. Defining speeding and fixing a penalty, therefore declaring what may be sufficient complaint in prosecutions. Mr. Williamson.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Very simple ordinance for you today. We received a speed study from TechStop and the attached ordinance in your packet there, adjusting the speed limit for Tybee Dale Road from Highway 16 South on out to the city limit. It's currently 55 miles an hour, and this would reduce that by five down to 50 miles an hour. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you if you like.
Will TechStop cover any of the costs associated with the change, sign changes or anything?
Their crews will make the sign changes, yes.
Evan, does five miles an hour really make a difference?
It does. So in this area, as they've looked at the speed studies and those speeds that on average they travel, in general, the majority of drivers are already driving at a safe rate. And that's kind of what this is adjusting to and setting that to. So it does help, especially for, you know, all the increased businesses, people coming in and off the road at that location. So it is a help in that spot.
Okay, thank you. This is a question I've had a couple of citizens ask me, is who updates the automated speed indicator on modern vehicles? They'll have a speed limit indicator on their dashboard.
Oh, I don't know.
Is that, okay, maybe a TechStop?
I don't drive a very modern vehicle.
I had a 62 Corvette. I didn't have one either, but that question came up. I assume somebody adjusts that once they change the signage.
I've been told that the one on 290 East is still sitting at 70. That's why a lot of people still ride at 70.
So are you talking about on mapping software? It's like on Google Maps, it will indicate that. So I think Google does that themselves. I assume that as they send their car around on streets for the street view and stuff like that, they're gathering that information and updating their applications.
Anything further?
I move that we approve ordinance 2023-22 as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next two items, 7C and D, all learned. Police Department, first one is consider approval of Resolution 2023-19R, approving the city manager to sign a fund agreement with the Community Foundation of the Texas Hill Country to establish the Fredericksburg Police Department Foundation Fund.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, staff. Very pleased to present this to you this morning. The Community Foundation of the Texas Hill Country and the city of Fredericksburg, Texas, are entering into the following agreement, which establishes a police department foundation fund for the purposes of supporting the Fredericksburg Police Department. The Fredericksburg Police Department Foundation Fund is going to be created to accept donations from any outside source interested in supporting the police department and the employees of the police department. The funds raised can be used for public safety, educational programs, the needs of the police department, as well as special programs, officer safety, training, equipment, new technology. There are many police departments around the state that also have a foundation fund that supports some of the same programs I just listed. The city of Fredericksburg and its representatives and the agents may solicit contributions for this police department foundation fund. The Community Foundation will provide all of the financial management reports associated with the fund. There is a 2% administrative fee, but it's capped at $1,000 a lifetime cap, just so you're aware of that. The only requirement for the city of Fredericksburg is to submit an annual report, which is a one-page letter to the Community Foundation Fund every year. And I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Now, come back again on the $1,000 cap. What's that?
The Community Foundation Fund is the overseer of the 501(c)(3), the nonprofit organization. And they charge an administrative fee of 2%, which is capped at $1,000 lifetime cap.
So once it hits $1,000, that's it?
Yes, sir.
Does this fund, we can't use this fund for salaries?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
The funds are typically used for community support projects, equipment, training, new technology, items like that. Not salaries, bonuses, or anything to do with employee pay.
If we vote to approve this, can we make the effective date today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
So Chief, we've spoken about this a little bit. Just for the audience, the way this works is the fund is held in reserve, almost like an escrow, managed by the 501(c)(3). You would make a formal request to that organization to release funds for a specific project. So it's very accountable, and I think it's an amazing idea, and thank you for leading the charge in this. I'd encourage anybody to participate with this, assuming we pass it. This can also be used for scholarships as well, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's something I left off. It can be used for scholarships to support families of injured fallen officers as well. And for any type of scholarship for a family or a current employee to higher education.
Can this fund be used to help pay for officers going through acad?
Yes, it can.
Which is like a scholarship, I guess. That's where you would treat it, right?
Yes, it would be like a scholarship. It would be for the tuition cost of the academy, which is currently $3,800 in officers.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve.
I'll ask you a question. Chief, would you mind giving us a couple or three statements about where this idea generated, I think about, because it's a good story?
It's something I had a conversation with a local business owner right after I was appointed chief. And I really didn't know much about it, know much about it, and so I started looking into it. Talked to a couple of their chiefs that had a foundation fund, what they use it for. Started talking to other council members and, you know, kind of bouncing that idea off council as well as staff. And then seeing this as, you know, as a great opportunity for the police department and the community to support one another. I have a vision of, you know, community involvement, community service, community projects. And this is a way that we can fund those community projects, and the police department can be involved with the community in a different avenue that we just haven't been able to in the past.
People with a specific interest in the means we give, this is a good vehicle.
Yes, sir.
I'd make the motion to approve Resolution 2023-19R, city manager sign a fund agreement with the Community Foundation for the Fredericksburg Police Department's Foundation Fund.
Second.
Motion second to approve this resolution. Further discussion? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Stay right there, Chief. Item 7D, consider the approval of Resolution 2023-20R, authorizing city manager to execute in her local agreement between Fredericksburg, Kerrville, and Bernie for a mutual aid agreement for multi-jurisdictional tactical response team.
Again, good morning, Councilman Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this agreement. This is another project that myself and Chief of Police from Kerrville and Chief of Police from Bernie have been working off about a year and a half. So before you, we have an agreement between the city of Fredericksburg, city of Kerrville, and city of Bernie. This agreement allows all three cities to deploy law enforcement joint assets under the Texas Government Code. So they authority this temporary exchange of law enforcement officers between different agencies for the purpose of mutual aid, mutual assistance. The state empowers law enforcement officers to exercise their power outside the normal jurisdiction. And when a request is made from another agency under this contract, we would like to honor that request and be authorized to do it under this agreement. The purpose of the agreement is to utilize law enforcement services and resources more effectively between the three agencies, to enhance the degree of cooperation between the agencies that are participating in this agreement, to be more timely and effective on response for calls of a specialized law enforcement nature, and to provide adequate manpower of highly-trained law enforcement officers to resolve crisis and high-risk incidences. And I will be happy to answer any questions you may have about the agreement.
We had this agreement in the past?
We've had a similar agreement back in the late 90s, early 2000s, with the city of Kerrville and the Kerr County Sheriff's Office. It dissolved in the early 2000s. And over the past year and a half, the, like I mentioned, the three chiefs kind of got together and said, hey, we believe we can make this happen for the three cities. We all follow the similar policies and procedures under the Texas Police Chiefs Administration Association. We're all accredited agencies. We've had several conversations. We view things alike. We believe that this is the appropriate time to come into this agreement, and that it's going to be successful.
Chief, I understand there's certain assets that those other cities have that we don't have that we can benefit from as well, and likewise, we're sharing resources with them, so it seems like a nice approach.
Absolutely, that's correct. We've already had a couple of trainings with the other two agencies. And we've also gone through a communications or house negotiation training with the other agencies as well. The Fredericksburg Police Department has a communications trailer that's equipped to have those different types of communications and capabilities, whether they're hostage, bear-headed, or just intel gathering. So we have that asset. The city of Bernie has an armored vehicle as an asset, and the city of Kerrville has a tactical response van. And neither one of the other agencies has that other piece. So combined, we have a complete asset, a full response of communications, armored vehicle, and a specialized van. So we bring those assets together along with the people that have the right training and the skills to resolve any incident that they face in the city.
Chief, there was an article in the Express News about this and saying how great it is. It says Bernie City Council is going to be renewing this annually. Is this something you'll bring to us every year, or what are you anticipating?
So it shall renew automatically every year unless one party decides to remove themselves to the agreement. And then it's like a 30-day written notice to the other two agencies, but it'll renew automatically every year.
Right.
And one side note, the city of Bernie approved the agreement on November 28th. And the agreement goes to Kerrville City Council on December 18th.
Anything else, Council?
I'll move we approve Resolution 2023-20R as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve this resolution as presented. No discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Want to commend you, Chief, that these inter-local agreements, I know, are not easy to reach because everybody has their list of tasks. Requires a great deal of trust between the agencies. So thank you for working this out. I think it's a good thing for our communities, Fredericksburg, Kerrville, and Bernie. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, we're at item 8A. Receive a presentation by Mr. Hammerson, Dr. Hammerson, and discuss the city of Fredericksburg sponsoring the 175th anniversary event at Martin, Fort Martin Scott. Eric, welcome.
Mayor, City Council, thank you very much. This is one of those three times a year I get to wear a red jacket. Valentine's Day, Christmas, and St. Barbara's Day, with patrons saying of the field artillery and anybody working with high explosives. As Mayor said in the proclamation that he made, Fort Martin Scott was the first frontier fort of the US Army in the state of Texas. It was a, came into being on the 5th of December today, when Captain Eastman arrived with his company. As the mayor said, it was the most advanced and most important position on the frontier. According to the general officer, he was in command of all US forces in Texas at the time, it anchored the first federal line, the forts that went all the way up to where Fort Worth is today and all the way down to Fort Duncan on the Rio Grande. Captain Eastman did the first drawings of the city of Fredericksburg, including the first sketch of the Ryan's Carriage that was here, while he was here. And the army, being the largest employer by far in Gillespie County, helped this town survive by the amount of money that it poured in. The 8th of March is the arrival of the 8th Infantry Regiment who came here. And it later became the regimental headquarters of that regiment for almost a year. In 1849, the brigands arrived. We hadn't mounted infantry before, but now we had brigands here. So in addition to having as many as 379 soldiers stationed here, they had as many as 215 horses. There were horses and all the horses in Gillespie County got that now. In 1849, December of 1849, it was renamed Fort Martin Scott by General Brooke. The army was spending about $100,000 in gold and silver here for various things, salaries, purchases of forage, things like that. At a point in time when the average adult in Gillespie County had $153 in property. So it's a significant input to them. The post was deactivated in December of 1853, but it stayed on Army maps until 1877. It was reoccupied in October of 1866 by Lieutenant Colonel Beaumont and his company from the Fourth Cavalry. He was a Medal of Honor winner during the Civil War. In March of 1870, John Browdergan purchased land for $1,600 in gold, and he established Browdergan Farms, which was the venue where we had the first Gillespie County Fair, the oldest community operating fair in the state of Texas. And the city of Fredericksburg purchased the property in 1959. Some months ago, Mayor asked Carol and I to work on trying to set up some sort of an appropriate commemoration for the post, for its history. And we've been working on that. There's been an interest by a lot of folks, individuals who have donated money to renovate the signs that have been falling into disrepair because of the weather. Memorial stone to those who had died here researching and writing for some historical articles. And a lot of involvement by individuals and groups who had previously, shall we say, had some disagreements with one another as to the way forward. This afternoon, I'm giving a presentation as part of the OLE program over the hill country. Country University Center about the history of Fort Martin Scott. In February, the editor of the newspaper has agreed that he'll do a pull-out section, depending on how many pages we need for the number of articles we have, talking about the history of the post. So how did it help Fredericksburg survive and prosper, building the road network that we drive on all the time up here, the units and the people that are stationed here, the women who were here, the soldiers who married local women in the community, the treaty of Fort Martin Scott, the interaction with Native Americans, and the fact that it was the army that first introduced slavery during Gillespie County. There were five slaves on the eighteen fifty slave schedule, all of them were owned by the command officer, who came from Connecticut. Have a story about that. The eighth of March, as I said, was the anniversary of when the Eighth Infantry Regiment arrived here, and they stayed here until the post closed. We'll have a commemoration be open to everyone, Fredericksburg, Gillespie County, any visitor that happens to be in town, that happens to be, the Friday of the weekend that starts school break, so Brady thinks that we're going to have a significant amount of folks that are in town. So we're going to have a family-friendly event. It's not going to involve any of the buses that are sitting on Main Street. We've advertised some of the other activities here. We're going to have a Concert Under the Stars by the Army Band down in Fort Samhouston. There actually was a regimental band stationed here. I know there have got to be stories out there. This is a community that loves music, and since about a third of the band's members were German, you know, I'm thinking there's got to be some stories about music being played down on the market. We're going to have a, the German choirs are going to sing. We're going to have a replica of an eighteen fifties field hospital coming up from the Army Medical Museum in San Antonio. Comanche Indians are going to be here at the Texas Ranger Heritage Center for their South Texas event that weekend. We hope to have some reenactress here as well, and we're going to have hopefully some both civilian and military visitors that we, we got invitations to, to have here. In order to be able to do this, what Andrea says, as a city-sponsored event, which is how it's been planned from the beginning, so the city can in fact wrap this under your insurance umbrella. It requires a vote by the city council if this is in fact going to be a city-sponsored event. That's what mayor and I have been working on for months. So I, thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to speak. Didn't seem to advance any of the slides, sorry about that. All right, any questions?
Any questions of Dr. Hammerson?
Yes, what will the event entail? Did I miss that? I'm sorry.
The one on the eighth of March?
Yes.
What we're hoping to be able to have is a variety of visitors here. We've put it on the agenda for the governor, some of the various representatives and senators both here and in Washington, commanding general of the Third Corps, the fourth officer, the adjutant general of the state of Texas, the commander of the thirty-sixth National Guard Division. We're inviting surrounding mayors in the community, also the curators of the various military posts that had existed here that are now museums or the cabin, Fort Chadburn, places like that. We hope to have some reenactors that are going to be here. We've got some folks who want to be storytellers, people that sort of tell the story for folks that are here. We're going to have an invitation in the paper to invite all of the folks in town and in the county to bring their lawn chair and a picnic supper and a flashlight, and come out to the playground that day. We'll, we'll have a, the junior art T C color guard, so that they will put up a thirty-star flag that day. We hope to be able to fire a little eighteen forty-one cannon that's there. We're hoping to bring down the command battalion commander and the command sergeant major of the First Battalion Eighth Infantry, which is a lineal descendant of the regiment stationed here. We want to unveil a monument to the soldiers who died here. They're buried in a grave for unknowns, three hundred and nineteen unknown soldiers down at the National Cemetery of San Antonio, and they will uncover the names, all of them with ranks or units, date of death. We've had a local five-one-C-three Hill Country Historical Foundation, which agreed to pay for the, the cost of that spend. We want to hopefully have the battalion commander and sergeant major unveil some, have a volley, you know, three volleys fired by the G W color guard and firing party, bugler sound taps, appropriate comments made. Turns out that the senior pastor at Bethany Lutheran Church, his great, great, great grandfather, Pastor Dunders, the superintendent sergeant who was here was the godfather of the daughter when she was baptized. We want to also present to the city a replica of a regimental flag that would have been flown in the headquarters of this place of the post. It's the only surviving flag of an infantry unit stationed here in Texas before the Civil War. The story of saving those colors, eighteen sixty-one, earned the regimental sergeant major who had been quartermaster sergeant here in eighteen fifty-one, and Corporal Hess the Medal of Honor, first act of the Civil War that resulted in the Medal of Honor, for the way that they managed to save that flag from being captured. We hope that we'll be able to, it's, it's in the process of being produced right now as an accurate representation. And, and after we've had the opportunity to be able to do some tours around the post for folks that are there, we'll have the Concert Under the Stars Band. And then the following Saturday, the, the next day, the Saturday, we're going to have reenactress and storytellers here with, with all the folks that are here. They can do this in conjunction with the Celebrate Texas event that's at the adjacent Texas Rangers. Yes, this is a concert, this will be about forty people from the concert band coming up from Fort Samh, they were here yesterday. The, their advance party came up and looked at it, and they're doing things like some songs that were popular in the eighteen forties and eighteen fifties, which we still sing today, like Yellow Rose in Texas and She Walked Over, and things like that, weren't invented by John Wayne, actually were about there a long time ago. So they've got vocalists coming up as well, so they've, they've done some interesting research on this. Musical piece by Van Der Strickland, they came across, they said, oh, it's kind of interesting. There's another piece that uses a quotation from Nimitz during World War Two, called Turning the Tide. So they're really, they're putting a lot of thought into how they would do this. You've got backup locations in case it becomes.
It's an amazing amount of work that you've done here, and I'm making an assumption, is, is the CDB involved in the marketing outreach to make sure this is well-publicized outside of our perimeter?
Exactly. He's going to be starting the advertising in January in conjunction with the advertising that we have for the city for that particular period of time.
Thank you so much for doing what you're doing.
Yes, I want to commend Eric and Carol for stepping up, volunteer, and lead the charge. Happily, it's a, a person ex-military who is well-trained in event organizing and working with the city to make sure this happens well. We're hoping this is a jumpstart for the fort that has had its history of difficulty in the community with upkeep, maintenance, and love and care, living interpretation so forth for years. So we're hoping that this will be the most recent outstart, uh, jumpstart to make it a truly destination, just a heritage site for the town as well. So we're hoping that next year we'll be getting in that.
We, I've had the opportunity to spend about a thousand hours in the last seven months, you know, doing research in original documents, the original post returns, the original regimental returns, accompanying returns, the original reports where the post secretary is here, letters and memoirs of individuals who wrote about their time being stationed here. So there's quite a lot, a lot of interesting history of the post, much of which unfortunately has been forgotten over the years.
Right. Well, thank you for bringing your spotlight to it, Eric and Carol. Appreciate your work. Andrew, did you have something you wanted to add? Is it Parks and Recreation Department?
Good morning, Andrea Schmidt, Parks Department. Mr. Hammerson is, or Dr. Hammerson is correct, we do need to take official action that the city will sponsor this event so that we can add it to the insurance. This is what we did with our July Fourth parade earlier this year, and I want to echo that I do appreciate all the work Hammerson's have put into getting this event ready for next year. We're excited.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, council?
Did I miss a cost where I sponsor it? Are we just, whatever it takes, or are we going to work on?
The, what the mayor has asked is that I put together a budget for this, and what Andrea told me is that we probably ought to sort of have a mark on the wall of about two thousand dollars. It can be used from hot funds, from what we've been told. For example, the city is defraying the cost of the band spending the night at their reduced rate at the licking band, in order to be able to do that, but there, we're not paying, for example, them to come up and come in. There is a requirement that you can't charge admission if you're going to have an army band there, but they have a new regulation that's in place that said, you know, you should, whatever organization is interested in, civic organization, trusted in sponsoring this, to try and offset the cost so it doesn't cost the army to be able to do this. So the mayor's asked me to check with Mick in the agreement, but yes, we could do that at the cost of the insurance. We'll have some cost for some porta-potties that we have to put out there, but we're trying to keep the cost as low as possible by using donations from individuals, for example, the money that was raised to replace the signs, that resulted in a private donation.
And I'll commit to work with the committee, volunteer committee, to present a budget implication, implication report, we want to approve this group, the chats, the recommendation is a little kind of tourism fund, and at this point, we're just voting to approve it as a sponsor for insurance purposes. We're not approving any money for that.
I had, I had mentioned this to the mayor earlier, this has actually had a follow-on effect, that commander of the band has expressed an interest in coming up here in December of next year. They do a, a Christmas concert on Fort Samhouston, they do another one in San Antonio, they do another one outside, and would like to do that up here in Fredericksburg and bring along the commander of U.S. Army North, so that he has the opportunity to partner with that's something to consider for the future, but it has the opportunity for us to draw people in the future.
And if, if at such time the action is to be taken with regard to funding, it appears to not be possible for, for whatever reason, we'll find some private support. Today is just about putting the inventory of the city on the table.
One more comment, Dan, we do have forty thousand dollars budgeted in the tourism fund, maintenance and operations out of the fort, so we're, we're not going to spend all of that money, and based on just the numbers that Mr. John Hammerson and I put together so far, I, I don't think we'll be, we'll have plenty of funds for this.
But I still commit to the council to be specific.
And Andrea, one further, the last time I walked the grounds, the, the signs, I know that we have private citizens that have raised money, it's been a couple, it's been a month or so since I walked out there probably, have they, have they been replaced yet, or will they be replaced before this event?
They should be over there right now. They were delivered Friday morning, so the guys were going to be over there this morning working on it and hopefully get it done by the end of today or tomorrow.
Awesome.
All right.
I didn't know that, by the way.
Are you sure? Let's take a motion. Oh, there's no motion on this, or is, do we need to take action? We can't take action.
I move that we sponsor the.
We're not posted for action.
We're not posted for action today.
Posted for receipt.
Do we need to do that? Mick, does that need to be on the next agenda to officially?
We should do that.
For the.
Because we, yeah, as sponsors, we're eligible to provide insurance and buy.
Okay. Do we need to put this on the agenda for next time for consideration, up to Mr. Davis' presentation and the request?
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, thanks so much. Thank you, Andy. Item nine, city manager's report.
Uh, mayor, council, nothing on my report today, but I'll have a pretty significant report next time, including community outreach.
That mean nothing's happening?
There's a lot happening, I can barely talk today, so it all works out just right.
Okay. So you're ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, item number ten, this is my future agenda.
Okay, so for the December nineteenth meeting coming up, we will have the Fort Martin Scott item, we of course have the minutes, Anna, you want to cover a number of planning items on the agenda?
Yes, so you'll see a couple of rezoning, the, there were two items that were posted for conditional use permits. One oh eight East Ufer has been pulled by the applicant, that will not go to planning and zoning tomorrow. Item two Z three four has been postponed until January, that's a CUP for a drive-through. That will come to, that will come to P and Z in January, and so subsequently to you in your second meeting in January. The other items, we are expecting P and Z to take action on tomorrow, so that would be two Z three two five, a rezoning. So we anticipate that staying on the agenda. And there was another rezoning, yes, two three zero oh nine, another rezoning that P and Z is anticipating to take action on tomorrow, so you would see it at your, at your next meeting.
Hey, Chris, you're, did I, did I miss this? You're rescheduling the professional design contract.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be January, likely the second meeting in January. Yes, sir.
Then we have Resolution appointing members to the Health Board and selection of our first Fredericksburg citizen university class, and by the way, we have twenty-six so far.
Shelley, you made a note that we need to take action on the Fort Martin Scott event.
And then we have an executive session, item four regarding the city manager.
Anything further?
And that's it, unless you would like to add something or remove something. Thank you.
All right, there being nothing further, then we'll move on. We do have one executive session item this morning, considering discussing the annual evaluation of our municipal judge.
Move we go into executive session?
Second.
Motion second to go from regular to executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?